I now call this public hearing of the Standing Committee on Social Development to Order. My name is Jane Wayallan Armstrong. I am the MLA for Mofi Kletchel Region and Chair of this committee. Members, can I have everybody please introduce themselves, starting with Danny?
Thank you, good evening. Thanks for coming out to the public hearing on Bill Number Two. My name is Danny McNeely, I'm the SOTU MLA.
Good evening, my name is George Nersu. I'm the member for Mackenzie Delta, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Shawna Morgan, I'm the MLA for Yellknife North.
Thank you. Can I get Mr. McNeely to open the meeting with a prayer?
Thank you, dear Lord, give us strength and guidance to keep our strength and make wise choices to this bill that is going to help our people with the tragedy that happened to cause this bill to improve the lifestyle of our communities in Northwest Territories as a whole, my seat.
On today's agenda, we have our public hearing on Bill Two, Missing Persons Act. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Sure.
Members, please declare conflict of interest as and when. Now to get started with our hearing. Bill Two, Missing Persons Act, receives second reading in the Legislative Assembly on February 26, 2024. This committee has been tasked with reviewing the bill to see if it needs any changes, if it has any issues we can solve, and if it is ready to continue on its path to becoming a law. That is our role in this process. We did not write the bill, but it is our job to take a very close look, a very close look at it, and making sure this bill represents the wants and needs of the NWT residents. So far in our review, we have met with the Minister of Justice, the RCMP, in the communities of Eklavik and Inuvik. Tonight, we look forward to hearing from you. We also want to acknowledge that this subject material is very challenging for many people. This topic is often intertwined with emotions, memories, and trauma. We ask that attendees and viewers, please take care of yourself during this meeting. This evening, we will hear from a representative from YWCA. After this, our presentation, after their presentation, if there is anyone else in attendance tonight that wishes to provide feedback, please get that, please get our attention or any of our staff, and we will make sure that you are put on the list. With that, we will begin by hearing from YWCA and NWT. Please introduce yourself and proceed with your presentation, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Nomazulu Kumalo. I am the YWCA's Associate Director, standing in for Howard Dumbuy SSA, our Executive Director. Thank you for this opportunity to share our thoughts on the proposed Missing Persons Act. For those unfamiliar with the organization, let me start by a quick introduction. The YWCA has been in the Territory since 1966. Our mission is to create safe and equitable northern communities where women, children, girls, and families can realize their full potential. To meet this mission, some of the services we offer include a family violence shelter, a second-stage housing and transitional housing with wraparound supports, a territory-wide crisis line for those experiencing abuse, an independent legal advice and representation program for victims of family violence, after-school care, and youth empowerment programs. We also undertake a number of projects in conjunction with the YWCA Canada to advocate on issues such as eradicating gender-based violence, housing for women and gender-diverse individuals, as well as affordable and reliable healthcare. Sorry, I don't know what's going on there. Okay, I'll go on to the next slide then. If you can put me on slide three, that'd be great, thank you. We are happy, regarding the protocol, the proposed act, we are happy to see that this legislation is making its way through the Territory's Legislative Assembly. As a nonprofit dedicated to empowering women and primarily serving clients of the Indigenous descent, we fully support implementing the 231 Calls to Justice from the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. This community, no doubt, is aware of the high rates of Indigenous women and the two S-LGBTQ+ individuals that have faced as much violence as they have, including other ethnicities, if I might add, within the Territory. And improving these responses to cases of missing persons in the NWT is an important part of addressing this crisis. I'm going to try and work with this, okay. While this is an issue, we do commend that the, we do commend and appreciate that this consideration has been put forward for domestic violence. And we commend the Territory for including the work that they have done as this is part of the YWCA, NWT's work that we do on a regular. One good example is the provision requiring the RCMP to obtain consent from a missing person who has been located before sharing that person's location with others. Imagine a situation where the missing person had been actually fleeing abuse from near home. So requiring consent to share their location helps to keep their privacy and really gives them a sense that their safety has been protected. That being said, we also do have some concerns. We do have several questions and concerns regarding the specifics of the legislation that we would like to raise. Primarily, we are worried about the impact of search orders issued for missing persons on family violence shelters in the Territory. Why do we bring this forward? We bring it forward because of our previous experiences with managing Sutherland House, the family violence shelter in Fort Smith. This shelter used to be under the YWCA-NWT's umbrella. During that time, we had several incidents where the RCMP attempted to enter the shelter without permission or reasonable explanation. This created harm and additional stress for the clients who were already dealing with trauma. It is currently YWCA's policy to deny RCMP access to our family violence shelters unless there are exceptional circumstances warranting their entry, such as threat to the health and safety of the clients or staff. This allows us to maintain a sense of safety, privacy, and dignity within the space. As such, we would not want to see that feeling of safety, privacy, and dignity compromised. And given all this information in our recommendations, we would like to see specific parameters around when RCMP can enter a family violence shelter for a missing persons case. We want to ensure that any consideration for search, any consideration to search a family violence shelter will only be made when there are absolutely no other alternatives available. While the proposed act requires justices to consider any information indicating domestic violence, it does not provide any guidelines on what that consideration will entail. Therefore, recommending that the RCMP and justices be truly trauma-informed in this regard. We would also like to see an ongoing training requirement for justices handling decisions to grant access for records or search warrants, a search warrants to RCMP. They must be sensitive to the issues of domestic violence and the various dynamics around this, that exist around this issue to ensure that they are making well-informed decisions in this regard. Additionally, while the legislation addresses the unlawful disclosure of information, it does not outline when and how records obtained in the course of a missing person's investigation should be destroyed. As such, there needs to be a timeline of how long these records will be kept and how, sorry, and/or when they will be destroyed, once the person is found and the case is closed. In conclusion, the YWCA-NWT understands that if the legislation is passed, the Minister of Justice will be able to make regulations around the procedures and provisions of the act. We stand ready to provide further recommendations and insight into how these regulations can be trauma-informed and fully account for the realities of domestic violence. On that note, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity to present. We look forward to continuing this collaboration and consultation. Our contact will be on this exceptionally last slide, if I can get to it. Thank you very much, awesome, thank you.
Members, are there any questions with the presentation? George?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for your presentation on your concerns in regards to RCMP and other agencies entering, entering into homes or shelters. That it has been echoed in other meetings, and we too are concerned, and everything that is taken or said is being recorded. We made recommendations to the Minister in this regard. But we do, I do, do have concerns that, you know, the RCMP going into a warming shelter or anything of that nature is of great concern and have to take that serious. But I would like to thank you for your presentation.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation and the thought and preparation you put into it. So, can you clarify, would you like to see legislation or regulations specify that RCMP shouldn't be allowed to enter family violence shelters at all? Or say only with an explanation or some warning? Or, or just that you ask them to consider the, you know, be trauma-informed and consider the impact? You know, what, how would you like to see this go down in an ideal case scenario? If, if there's someone that is missing that the RCMP believe might be in the shelter? They have told us that in order to conclude a case, they need to physically see that person in person. You know, they can't take someone else's word for it, that we've seen them, they're okay not to worry. The RCMP says they need to physically, you know, see and verify that that person is alive and well and, you know, in that place. So, can you give us some insight on what, how you would like them to deal with it? If, if there is a missing person that might be inside a family violence shelter?
Ms. Kumala?
Thank you. I think it needs to be spelled out very explicitly what the process would be. And given the example that we provided with the shelter that we were running in Fort Smith, the problem is that when you have like a high turnover of the RCMP, some may, some may not. Perhaps having regular, you know, trauma-informed sessions where there's retraining or instances where they can every so often be reminded, I'm not sure how that would work within their, you know, jurisdiction parameters and such. But for us, we need to make sure that it is being followed and the process is known both to us and to them, where they are not infringing on the rights of the, of the clients that we serve. Because then someone will come and say, well, the justice said. Well, you don't know what the justice said. But then if it's something that we all know is within the act and that is being followed and is clear to the community, ourselves, them, justice, and everybody, that I think would help quite a lot. I hope that helps.
So, yeah, just also to add on to what Noma was saying. Yeah, we clearly, as we said in our presentation, our current policy is to not let them into the shelter at all because that can cause a lot of harm, it can kind of compromise the safety of the space. So, and we also, like, our current policy right now is if they call asking for someone, we don't necessarily disclose whether or not that person is in the shelter. We take the message and our frontline workers will actually discuss with the client and go from there. We let the client decide how they want to approach that. So I understand that might be a conflict with like RCMP protocol and procedure. But I think continuing to engage with us and our frontline workers, when you guys create those regulations, can help us ensure that we've got enough parameters in place. I think to sum it up though, we would like to see RCMP not really able to come into the shelter unless it's like a dire situation and someone's like threat to their life and health and safety is at risk. I think it's kind of what, so yeah, I don't have any specifics for you on that, but we can definitely keep engaging with you to figure out what would work and also engage with our frontline workers to figure out like how can we make sure that we're maintaining the safety of the space for clients.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brackenberry. Okay, Shawna, do you have a follow-up? No, okay, Mr. McNeely?
Thank you for your presentation, and you're not alone. Committee has heard from a number of individuals in their, in our trips to the Delta and online presentations and suggestions. All in all, it's good. It helps us to gather the information, to upgrade or update in a more efficient manner on Bill Number Two. So I just want to say that your presentation is valued and it just helps committee to draft the legislation that would be satisfactory to everybody and efficient, giving the authorities the necessary tools to do their investigation on missing people. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Testor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and apologize for coming in late, but I'm Kieran Testor, I'm a member for Range Lake. Thank you very much for the presentation and for very specific recommendations. That's always very helpful for our work as we look to improve the bill. And certainly, your experience with trauma-informed care of your clients is invaluable to our understanding of how these things work. I was just wondering if we, or I had a kind of contextual question for how do you, and I don't know if this has been the case, but if there is a search warrant issued to the RCMP that would allow them to enter a shelter that has been issued by justice, how would you deal with that situation in a way that's trauma-informed? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Kumalo?
Thank you. The, sometimes it's not the search warrant itself, oh, yes. Sometimes it is the way that it is conducted, the tone that one presents themselves with, the demeanor that one comes across as, the, you know, the voice and such. Communication is key. When such needs to be done and there is communication with the staff, now, understanding that we advocate for the client, we have to make sure that the client feels safe enough to have that conversation because we would ask, would you like to go out and talk to this individual? Or would you like us to speak on your behalf and to say? And I recognize that there is a question around, we would want to see that individual. But we function from a space of, you know, honesty, the truth, and we wouldn't necessarily tell somebody that so-and-so is there and they're actually not there. Perhaps giving them time to, you say, okay, yes, this person is here, but may not want to speak to the RCMP at that point in time. Can they be given, you know, time to process the information? Yes, you've been found, but what next? When can we next talk to you? And the staff may work with them to say, okay, would you like us to be present in the room for you to speak to those individuals? I think that would be great. I think one of the issues that is a concern is that when people say that they're trauma-informed, do we truly understand what it is? Because it's a term that is being thrown around. Therefore, that training in all honesty, I think, would, would be helpful. And not just it being trauma-informed, but then being very specific to the Missing Persons Act. How does that work and how should that work? How will that work in those situations? Do I have a concrete answer for now to say this is how we should do it? Absolutely not. But I think those, if those things that we've just mentioned are considered when we are working through training individuals that would be included in this process and really truly making it meaningful for them to say, we are doing trauma-informed not just because we are saying it, but because we are truly practicing it.
This is Mr. Testor, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the response. I appreciate that there's a silver bullet manual for this, and a lot of it's going to come from lived experience. And I think when we talk about community policing, that kind of cultural sensitivity should be a part of that as well. So, community policing is not just patrolling the street, but also knowing how to talk to people, especially people who are victims in these circumstances. I think this kind of, this speaks to a fundamental tension in this piece of legislation where you have, you know, loved ones of missing persons who want answers and people who don't want to be found maintaining their anonymity. And what we've seen in the act and what we've been told as well is that the RCMP, when they locate someone, they don't release any identifying information. They usually just say this person's alive and well and encourage the individual to contact the person who made the complaint, but the request to be found. So I guess I'm just trying to, I certainly respect the need for that safe space and to maintain the integrity of that. But I also think we need, when there is someone who's missing, the RCMP do need the tools to move quickly to find that person as soon as possible. And even if they don't want to be found, that's not getting, I'm not sure, I guess anyone listening, that that, we've been told that that's not, they don't release that publicly. They don't say, oh, this person's been found, this is where they're at. So, if there was certainty around trauma-informed procedures and that the authorities worked with organizations like the Y to ensure that access to the space had your support and all that kind of stuff, would you still kind of support the need for expediency in the act? So we could find these people quickly? Like with the caveat that they're not breaking down the doors and searching room by room, but they are working with your staff and taking an approach that ensures your participants in any search or request for information? And if that's not clear, please let me know, and I can rephrase things, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nersu? Oh, okay, sorry about that, sorry, sorry, I do apologize. Ms. Kumalo?
I understand the immediacy and truly respect it, and I'm sure anybody would. And absolutely, we would want to make sure that that person is found. But we also have to hear from the individual that is being looked for, being searched for, right? Because they have their story, have we truly heard what their story is? I'll give an example. It could be anybody, someone who is going through abuse, has fled, and their partner decides to say this is a missing person, right? We only hear the side of the partner that's looking for this individual saying that this person is missing. But truly, in all reality, in all sense of the word, really just trying to find where they are. But once we hear the story of the individual that's being looked for, then maybe a decision can be better made as to what the next step would be. If they want to connect, then it's up to them if they want to connect with the person that's looking for them. I would think. But we have to be mindful of what the individual that is being looked for is saying. Just because I'm looking for somebody, even if it was my mom looking for me, if it's an abusive situation, they might just say, okay, well, she's gone missing because of A, B, C, D. But let me tell my story to let it be heard, and then a decision can be made from then how we proceed with it.
Ms. Brackenberry?
Yeah, just to say as well, like, our shelter in Yellknife actually does have a very good working relationship with the RCMP here. We know that it doesn't always have to be like contentious between us and the RCMP. Of course, we've had instances in the past that kind of led to that. But we do work together a lot of time, obviously, to keep people safe. And one idea that just kind of came to my head for how to make a like search order a bit more respectful in a shelter is like giving the shelter staff a heads up, like maybe a day or two or few hours anyways in advance, because I know, again, you got to move quickly on these things, so that they can inform other clients in the house that the RCMP are coming and then let them know what's going on. So they're not kind of caught unawares when police show up and feel unsafe. So that's just like one idea. Again, of course, like our frontline staff will have a lot more ideas on how to, to make those search orders work effectively for them and the RCMP. Yeah, and again, we're always willing to continue chatting about how to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. N, yeah, Mr. Nersu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, since before residential school, the Indigenous people have always been, have been trained to say yes to the authorities. And in our smaller communities, well, use Fort McPherson, we don't have a women's shelter. And if they're at, if they're at their relative's house or a friend's house and the RCMP go there, they don't even, they wouldn't even ask for a search warrant. All they'd say is yes, and they'll take the individual without, you know, this individual is in danger, but you know, how can we in the smaller communities assist in this matter? Like, you know, sometimes the chief or some counselor may be advocating on their behalf if requested. But is there a number that, you know, the nearest shelter, I think, is about 200 kilometers away in Inuvik? So, it's not very, it's not very safe and the, even prior to the RCMP coming to a residence to check on this person because her abusive partner may say that, you know, she's been gone for a couple of days and is worried, but she's trying to keep, he or she is trying to keep safe. How would you recommend that we, we deal with this problem, you know? Because we've been trained to say yes to the authorities, and it still, it still happens. It'd be good if we, each community could have a shelter, but you know, is there a number that someone can call where they can advocate on their behalf? Something we like recommend it for, especially for the smaller communities, we don't have that access to a shelter and everybody knows where everybody is. So they say, you know, see this person around, I'm sure they're going to say they saw that person and then it's, that person's safety is in danger. So how would you recommend that we can, you know, maybe implement some of this into this bill where it can, like, your initiative is to protect the client at all costs? And that's my concern too, so you know, it'd be good to have something in place where we can take this back to smaller communities to, maybe even put in this bill where it says, you know, the police can't interfere if it's for someone's safety. Thank you.
Ms. Kumalo?
Thank you for bringing up that, sir. We do have a crisis line that we have for those that are experiencing abuse. And we do assist with emergency protection orders, and that can, is usually And we do assist with emergency protection orders and that can, is usually done through either the RCMP actually or our shelter, the Aliso Market here, shelter here in Yellowknife. But I think at some point, we're going to have to unlearn some habits and relearn them. And that's where I believe that trauma-inform comes in. That being said, we do have some safe homes, that, the safe homes projects that we have started. They, it's a slow process, but then also needing the engagement of the communities and the territory at large. So to address those that are exceptionally far away outside of a crisis line at the moment is really to unlearn from perhaps those that have been taught to continuously say yes, but also teaching those that are the perpetrators, so to speak, to be as gentle as possible. We're talking humanity here, right? And we can have processes in place and rules and regulations, bills and such, but there is that humanity that needs to be considered. It has been long lost, but it needs to be brought back. And how would we do that? I would think like unlearning some habits and relearning them. But immediacy, definitely have the crisis line, we can assist with that. Will they be removed immediately? I wouldn't know to speak to that at the moment. Perhaps that's something that we can shelf and connect with the rest of the team, including the executive director and the shelter manager and get back to you on that one.
Emily Neersu, do you have a follow-up? Okay. Emily Testor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the guidelines for destruction of records, when we ask the RCMP about what legislation they fall under, they're, they fall under, because they're a federal agency, they fall under the Federal Access to Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And their records would fall the same retention and destruction schedules that are included in their record management system. I think, so would you be more comfortable if it was explicit in the Act or in the regulations around the destruction of records obtained through the three types, the emergency demands and such? Is that more the shape of what you're saying? I'm seeing nodding of heads, but so I think that's right. And we still need to do a bit of homework on what that looks like because there were some questions about. But those systems are quite robust, but I don't have answers, I don't think we have answers. So we'll get those on what that looks like. And I just, one comment on regulations, we as a committee and as legislators don't make the regs. That's a job for our cabinet colleagues. So we hope we will recommend that you stay and all stakeholders stay engaged, but we have limited say over what those look like after the law is passed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Kumala? Kumala?
Um, yes, we have to start from somewhere, right? So having that information without leaving somebody wondering what that would look like would be great. So if that was included, I mean, just spelling out, you know, what acts and what information protection each of these falls under would be of, I think, would be of great assistance. It would give a sense of assuredly and a sense that, well, my records are not going to be open to whoever, whenever, for however long. There is a point in time where it's tucked away and is destroyed somehow. But just making sure that folks know about that would make a difference, I believe. So if, in this room, we're going to be speaking on behalf of everybody else to those that make the legislation, policymakers and such, that would be wonderful.
Emily Testor, follow-up?
Thank you. I just, yeah, so the Access to Information Acts are, they have paramancy, I'm trying to remember the technical term, but basically those, you don't need to say it in every bill that ATIP applies to the bill because the legislation has paramancy over other, other legislations. It's the same in the federal system as well. So it's rare that, not all acts work that way, but there's some kind of keystone acts which apply broadly across the board. So I want the public to be sure that if your information is protected, even if it's obtained through criminal investigations, there's different limitations on it. And furthermore, the RCMP was very clear that any active investigation is not disclosed when there's an access request. So if this is not, and it was, our read of it and our understanding of it, this is not like carte blanche to go and get whatever they want. There are limitations to it and it falls under the same protections and access regime as any other information that's handled by the government. So, yeah, and if it's a territorial act, it falls under our legislation as well and the same, same rule, our rules apply. Thank you.
Ms. Kumala?
I understand what you're saying. However, maybe just putting it in umbrella term without spelling out all of the protections that would encompass this, but just in umbrella term to make people feel, I feel like if I'm asking about it or we're asking about it, there's somebody else out there that actually is wondering about it as well. But if it's just summarize some kind of way in umbrella definition of, okay, all of this is being protected under whatever protection, Access of Information Protection of Information Act and such would be helpful.
Emily McNeely?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleague, yeah, Mr. Testor, pretty much captured what I was going to say on the complexity of this bill. And missing people go missing for a variety of reasons. And in your case, you're, you had mentioned people might go be missing because of the abusive environment, to run away from that and go missing. But there's also, you know, in the complexity of this bill, as my colleague mentioned, you've got, the individual has privacy rights as well. So there's other factors. But I guess the main factor that what we have been hearing a lot of is giving the RCMP division more powers and clarity on legislation, how to do their search. So they can continue and just don't stop because of that. Then also, as my colleague said there, this bill is not finished just because we had the hearings. Once we understand the process, including the passage of the bill and the assent of the bill, then regulations, the regulatory process is drafted. So there's the legislation, then the regulations. So we're hoping that the regulations would be just as strong as what we're hearing and what we're going to be putting in the report. There's pieces of legislation that are still, that we have passed in the Eighteenth Assembly that are still being worked on in the regulatory process. So it's, it can be a lengthy job before we finally get a bill that's going to support everybody's concerns incorporated into that. Thank you.
Ms. Kumala?
Thank you for explaining that further. It is my hope that we just put forward our best effort in whatever we're doing, however long the process will take, but also making sure that we keep in mind those that it impacts at the forefront.
Okay, seeing no further questions, I would like to thank you very much for taking the time to present to the committee this evening. Thank you. So at this time, I would like to open the floor to whoever would like to provide feedback on Bill Two, Missing Persons Act. Thank you. Thank you. I believe that everybody who wanted to share feedback has not had the opportunity to do so. I want to thank everyone who shared with us today. Your comments will be considered by us in this review of Bill Two as we determine if any changes are needed to this legislation and/or if it is ready to become a law. As we all know, the subject matter is very emotional and challenging. Once again, I encourage everyone, both in, both those in the room tonight and those watching from home, to take care of themselves and to take, to take, to take care of one another after the meeting. This now concludes the public portion of our meeting. Thank you for joining us.